Well, if you look so unimpressed then.
Well, I'm just surprised because it's...
Oh, quick, yeah.
You know, it all came through immediately with them. And it's, I thought it was going to hang around because it said eight o'clock instead of seven.
Yeah, I can start them whenever.
Do you want me to put the video on please, Emma? Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hello, there we go.
Got it?
Yeah.
You always look so serene, Gerry, when you're just sitting there. You're absolutely right in the middle of the screen. Absolutely, you know, it's perfect. Just need to move the pictures around a bit and you'll be...
Yeah, you're just shopping across to the right.
Well, we have one guest. I'm just allowing her, well, somebody coming to the meeting. It's Lee from the Aundal Chronicle, so she's just coming in.
Okay.
France Mark, German impressionist.
Oh, right, okay.
You want us to do an impression?
Popsies, popsies. Dear, dear.
Doesn't seem sensible.
It's a bit like that picture I gave you.
Sorry?
Matches your shirt.
Okay.
We have to do impressions now to get in. Hi, Lee.
Hi, I'm trying to unmute you. She's muted. Can you unmute?
Yeah, I can unmute, but...
That's it, you're there now, that's fine.
Stay muted because I'm sure you don't want to hear the dishwasher in the background.
Well, if you want to mute yourself at any point, just do so.
Yeah, I might also turn off the video when I go and get a cup of tea.
Okay, that's all right.
Yeah. All right. So just on your publication, when is, when are you thinking it might be published again?
The Chronicle. Oh, we're going to the printer on Friday.
All right, okay.
Yes, so we're just proofreading it now. You can see, well, I don't know if this, does this come out backwards?
No, no.
No, it's fine.
That's what it is.
Is it a full edition, Lee?
It is, yeah, all the pages.
Oh, good.
But the distribution will be less because we don't have the team of people to distribute to all the houses. So it'll be just via Aundal News and the Co-op, I hope. And I'll just let people know, you know, online that, well, I'll put out a link to the PDF version so people can get it online.
So Waitrose, do you want a pile?
Well, I'll ask again under the circumstances, but in the past they've refused to distribute it because they'll only distribute their own brand publications.
All right.
But, you know, they might change their mind under the circumstances.
I wouldn't mind putting some round if that would help.
Well, I'm only going to do probably 2,000 because we didn't take as much advertising this time because of the smaller distribution. I couldn't justify charging, you know, everybody for advertising. And so I didn't take as much as I would normally for it. And so we're just going to do 2,000 copies. Normally we do 4,000 and distribute about 3,500. So, but I'll ask people, especially older people or anybody who wants paper copy, and then I'll happily deliver it to people. So just let me know. Or you can just pick up also copies at Aundal News if you know people who would like some. You could just get a stack at Aundal News and take them round.
Yeah.
So hopefully people, we've tried to cover the whole, you know, the situation as it's emerged since March 23rd and just cover the, you know, the things that have emerged and the heroes around town.
Awesome, yeah. Right, well, thank you very much, Lee. So we're ready then to start the meeting. Seem to have a pretty good turnout today. All right, so first one then, Emma, apologies for absence.
Yeah, just to remind everybody, the meeting's being recorded and it will get uploaded up onto the website.
Excellent.
Apologies for absence, I've had from Peter and from Val. And councillor Fuller has said that he might be liked.
Declarations of interest? I can't say anything on this for me at the moment, but I will, I will declare if an item comes up. Okay.
Sorry.
David.
I'm going to do one, but I'm just waiting. On the planning applications, the one in relation to West Street by Mr Bateman. Mr Bateman is a personal friend of mine.
Okay.
So we'll declare it as another interest.
Okay, thank you, David. Right, minutes of the previous meetings then. So we've got the first one for the 19th of April. Correct. I've got 21st of April.
I've got the wrong date.
I don't know whether the date's right on the agenda or right on the, they're not the same.
The minutes are right, the agenda's a mistake.
Yeah, okay, so Tuesday the 21st. Because the other one, I noticed, it's got a Tuesday and it was a Thursday, wasn't it?
The 21st is a Tuesday and the 19th is a Sunday.
21st and then the 30th was a Thursday.
Yeah. So let's do the one for the 21st then. So is everybody, anybody happy with those minutes?
Awesome, there, so.
Right, everybody was there, yeah, okay, so we've got a proposer then? Yeah, from Terry, from the seconda. Yeah, from Clive, and then all those in favour that were there. Okay, let's carry on, let me just sign those and then we can move on.
I think I'm going to have one of those meetings again where it keeps ducking in and out.
Okay. That was that one. And then we've got the one, the minutes for the 30th of April, which was a Thursday. I've already edited that word out.
Yeah, thank you.
Right, so in attendance there, we had myself, Ian, Gerry, David, Peter Bill and Terry. So anybody got any problems with them? If not, we've got a proposer. Yep, so Terry proposed, Gerry was seconda, all those in favour. Thank you. That bit. Public participation, okay, so apart from the press representation and then consultation of requests from interested parties. Nothing on either of those, okay? As far as the mayor's report is, I'm afraid I haven't got a written report for you, but in terms of the correspondence, we've had a reply to the second stage of our complaints procedure from ENC, which I'm in the process of drafting a response to. And we've also had an offer of support from Tom Purslove, which I'm also drafting a response to. Beyond that, it's mostly, as was said before, about the effort that's gone around the town. You know, there's been tremendous amount of public support, particularly for the elderly community around town. Gerry.
I just wanted to say that I'm very happy with your draft response to Tom and to the ombudsman.
Okay, Gerry, cheers. So I'll take those then to the next level and take that to proceed with those. Yeah, so the effort around the town has been absolutely tremendous. You know, I know that, I mean, pulling a name out of Freddy and, you know, what you've been doing is just beyond belief. You know, from coordinating eggs through to distributing magazines and so on. Really a great example of what we could all do.
3,808 eggs so far.
Excellent. Exceptional.
Not the first, I've done them all, trust me, it's no yoking matter.
All white then.
Okay. I warn you, my computer seems to be giving up. Let's see how we go, carry on. Can anybody hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Right, so district councillors' reports, I don't think we had anything from those.
No, I haven't got anything this time, nothing.
Okay, I know that Phil Stern has been quite ill and that Peter Bill has been very included to him. Gerry.
Phil was in Waitrose today, I saw him, saw him today at Waitrose. So he's recovered, he's obviously recovered.
Yeah, he's on the mend, yeah, that's good news. Right, to receive an update on the matters related to the COVID-19 lockdown.
Yeah, I just popped this on there just in case we've got anything. The only things, things that are going on in the town, and obviously we're sort of starting to do a few more things within our buildings like this. The preschool will be looking to open at the 1st of June, although I'm not 100% sure that that has been fully confirmed from what I saw in the news tonight. But there at the moment, getting everything ready with the view to starting. And we're also obviously started, we've started our markets up again. And we're also using Flit and House a little bit more, but it's not open to members of the public.
Okay, so is the preschool any concern to us?
None, other than we need to make sure that the staff can get in. They have to come in via Flit and House. But all of the parents and children come in from the back entrance in the car park. So they won't have to come into the building.
Okay, and they're managing the crowd control themselves?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, Terry?
No, no, you answered, you've asked my question.
Okay, all right. Right, request from the member of the public to record footage from the flying drone.
I'm looking at his website, it's very professional indeed. I think he's done stuff, he solves the BBC and so on. I don't know how he's going to promote the town, but, you know, I've got no objection, it was a good job.
Yeah, okay, Gerry?
Yeah, me too. I mean, he seems very professional and has done a proper job in terms of contacting people, so I've got no problems with it.
No, okay, Terry?
I'm not happy. I think we, people flying drones around, it'll be interesting to see what the school say about it. The people flying drones around, who we've not done any due diligence on, other than looked at a website, makes me a little bit nervous.
Yeah, okay, I think my issue on that one, David, I'll come to you in just one moment, is the fact that we are not the licensing authority for people flying drones. You know, so all we're saying is, have we got a problem with it or not, in the concept? David, go on.
You stole my thunder to a degree because I was about to point out, we don't really have any jurisdiction anyway.
No.
Because we can't withhold permission any more than we can grant it. All we could do is express a view. I think whilst it might turn out to be a good idea, at the moment I share Terry's reservations because I don't think we necessarily know enough. And I think will be quite a few people who would be quite concerned at the idea of drones flying about above them and taking photographs.
There is a point as well about the, I mean, I agree with everything you say, but it's about the cattle, cattle out in the fields, young, you know, drones are in other places. I've been around the world, they completely ban them anywhere near cows because they just don't like them. They don't like the high pitched stuff. But as I say, there's nothing we can do about that. It's just perhaps remind the operator that we are, you know, in a rural area and there are, you know, cattle out in the fields and...
Yeah, okay.
Diligence from that side, you know, reminding him perhaps.
Yeah, okay, Ian?
Yeah, it's all valid points and I think Terry's point about the school is valid, but if there's no kids around, I can't see that being an issue. But there's three or four guys flying drones up and down the river at the moment. They were out yesterday afternoon, so, you know, there's people doing this all the time anyhow. And as people said, we can't necessarily give or not give permission, but it can happen anyhow.
Okay, Malcolm?
Yeah, well, I don't know how many of you have actually seen the footage on his website, but it won't do any harm for the town. He knows what he's doing, clearly knows what he's doing and he has taken the trouble to ask. Yeah. Absolutely no problem with it, I think it's a benefit.
Okay, Gerry?
Yeah, just reiterating what I said before, I think, you know, if he's made the point that he's licensed, he's got all the proper permissions, he's asking us for permission. He's not just, you know, flying off, doing his own thing without asking us. I think, you know, to be honest, you know, if it's not causing any concerns, then we shouldn't discourage him because, you know, that's the kind of responsible activity we want to see, not the irresponsible flying anywhere willingly without asking permission.
Yeah.
Okay, Ian?
He also says in the letter, prior to be released, you're welcome to review and advise. So we could always look at it and point out any issues if, woe betide, something were to come amiss. I don't know what it would be, so.
Yeah, okay, go on, Clive.
What's it for, what is he doing?
I don't think he said it, I said it.
I think he's...
No, I think he's just interested, yeah.
Yeah, I think he's just taking it for his own enjoyment and benefit. I mean, you know, but if it gets a spin-off bonus for the town, that's fine as well.
Yeah, I was just, just out of curiosity, I asked him a minute ago.
Sticking on our website.
Okay, so we just need a letter back to him saying that we're, you know, essentially, what I say is, we don't have any objections, but...
Terry wanted to say something, Tony, Terry's...
Oh, sorry, didn't notice that. Terry?
I haven't looked at the website. I wondered if on the website is his CAA registration number? And if so, did anybody look that up?
No, but again, it goes back into us not being the licensing authority, you know, so, you know, whatever he does, it's really a case of, yeah, registered or not, you know, what's our feeling about him flying and filming over Aundal? Yeah, so I think, you know, we need just a letter, you know, saying that that thing about the personnel and the animals, just to say to respect the people and the farmers around Aundal.
Coming by me.
Yeah, Emma, that's all right?
Yeah, that's fine, yeah. Do you want me to ask him to send us a copy once he's, just to have a look at?
Yes, definitely, we would like, you know, almost write to his, get to use it if we wanted to.
Yeah, absolutely, I was just going to say, Tony, can we use it on our Facebook page or website if we want to?
Yeah, okay.
Okay, well, that was quite an unusual one, but yes, it's, that's what we do. Request to install more dog waste bins in Aundal.
Yes, this has come from Ian by Aundal School. And they're keen to look at having some dog mess bins near to Chapel Gardens and off Pavilion Drive because people have been walking their dogs and, I assume, not picking up the mess afterwards. So it's whether we, I think the reason it went on the agenda was to whether we choose to buy them and they become our bins, or I think Ian was also going to speak to Aundal as well, see if they wanted to purchase them.
Yeah, sorry, we're going Gerry first and then Ian.
Who empties the dog waste bins we've got at the moment? And will they be willing to empty any additional ones we put in?
ENC, they, I've still got, I've contacted them, but they haven't come back to me. But as far as I'm aware, our bins, we pay, that are on our land, we pay to have those emptied. And it's, I think it's about something like £120 for six months or four months. It's not a huge amount of money.
It's after all of them are reached.
That's just the ones on our land.
Yeah.
Ones that are on highway land, I think, are emptied as part of waste collection. So as part of your bin collection and everything else. The ones that I think are off Creed Road that were put in by, on the Preciminent Estate, I think they, their maintenance contractors has to deal with that one.
Okay, Gerry?
Sorry, I didn't get a clear answer to that, but I mean, my view would be, I'd have no problem with new bins going in as long as we don't end up with an ongoing cost for emptying them. So, or at least not, at least not excessive ongoing cost.
And then Ian, just before, Terry?
Just to give you a little bit of the genesis of it. At the moment, there's a lot of people walking on the playing fields and chapel lawns and the school staff having to go through the bins or pick it all up and et cetera, et cetera. And they're obviously not particularly happy with life. And one logical assumption is to shut all the gates and shut everything off, which isn't a great idea. So the idea is that the school will pay for the bins, pay the council, pay highways, or whoever has to install them. And probably depending on the cost, pay the picking up cost if there is one at all. But they don't want to put the bins on school property because it would appear to be encouraging dog walking on school property. So it's a compromise rather than locking gates and horrible things like that.
Yeah, okay, just going in the sequence of hands, then it was Terry next.
It was a money question, which has just been answered.
All right then, so Emma and then Gerry.
As far as I'm aware, if anybody puts dog waste in, in a public ordinary bin, it gets collected as normal, it doesn't have to be separated out, so...
We apparently have a new contractor who has different rules. So that's where the problem started.
Just on the Aundal School properties at the moment. I mean, I think quite a lot of it's closed off now anyway. The gates seem to be closed in the chapel. I walked past the chapel the other day, gates are closed. I believe this playing field is also, gates are closed as well and...
The gates on Pavilion Drive are open, but there are still people jumping over with their dogs, running nasty stuff, leaving. And I'm not sure it would necessarily stop then, but it's sort of making a statement that at least there's an opportunity to please take your waste with you and there's a bin at all the main exit points.
Well, look, based on what you said, yeah, based on what you said then, if the school's willing to pay for the bins and for the emptying of them, you know, the question is purely on, you know, getting permission to have them put up, isn't it, Emma?
Yeah, we do, all we've got to do is, we've got to, once you know where they go, we need to just put it on a map and send it to highways so that they can approve it.
Okay then, so if you could do that for us, Emma, then, and then it's, you know, down to a liaison with the school, whoever the school is responsible about the payments and, yeah, there's a big contract, I'm assuming, between the schools and highways, rather than us being in the middle of it. Or the school and whoever does the emptying.
Yep, to highways, I suppose, to...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, I've got a feeling, I am sort of 99% sure that if it's on the highway, we won't have, we don't have to pay for it, we're only paying for the ones that are on our property.
Okay then, all right, we'll check on that one then, yeah. Right, receiving reports then, Emma, the clerk's report?
I don't think, I don't think there was a huge amount in at this time.
I was hoping the wrong one.
Yeah, a lot of the things. There was just a brief update about the town clerk's meeting I've been to. And maintenance team, you know, the grass, we did have a complaint about the grass in the cemetery, but they're trying to get on top of that now. But I'm hopeful, potentially in the next couple of weeks, we may be able to get the community paid-up people to come back and help.
Oh, good, yeah, okay.
And that's about it really.
Right, thank you. And then approve the asset register. There are a couple of things that, Emma, you tidied up, aren't it?
Yeah, I took out, there was a duplication on page three where I'd got a duplication for the office chairs and control unit, so I've taken that out. There was something else, wasn't there? Oh, there are a list of items that don't have any information next to it, basically because we don't have any information. We don't know how long we've had them and we don't know how much they cost. They're just listed.
Okay. Right, with that one, yes, Terry?
Gerry was before me.
All right, sorry.
Oh, just a general question really, quite a lot of the office equipment is quite old and I was wondering whether it should have been depreciated more. It probably, it's not a significant issue, but I just...
Yeah, you don't depreciate on a council asset register.
All right, okay.
It's what you bought it, even though it's donkey's years old and just sitting there.
It's apparently worth loads of money.
Yeah, another 50 years' time.
Okay, sorry, my mistake.
Yeah, yeah.
Emma, what happens if you throw it away? It just disappeared.
Yeah, we take it off the list, yeah. But we're not, yeah.
Terry?
I wonder when we last did a stock check?
A stock?
On that list.
On that list, but on the whole, it's been done recently since I've been here.
Okay.
So it's not like donkey's year old. And obviously new things get added on and then anything that we haven't got anymore gets taken on.
So do the auditors never say, let's have a look at your checklist against your assets?
They look at the list, but they don't check all the assets, no.
Okay.
I mean, when you look at the list, there isn't anything made you'd say, you know, that's, you know, there's a problem there. It doesn't look like there's anything hidden in that list. I did ask Emma though about the issue of the rugby club and the ownership of the car park and so on, but, you know, it doesn't affect what we're doing until something's been resolved on it.
Yeah, I mean, we sort of, it's half hours, half not, but that, it's still being discussed at the moment.
Yeah, all right, anything else on that one? Move on.
Did you want to just approve it? So thank you very much.
Okay then, so we need an approver on that?
Yeah.
There's the, and a seconda?
Can I just ask a question?
Oh, no, you've approved it.
I'm just going to ask a question, there's two electronic notice boards on there, but aren't there three? Or is one of them owned by someone else?
There are three, I've got a feeling that the one down at Waitrose.
Owned by them.
Is owned by them. Yeah, that's...
Okay, a good observation though, yeah. All right, Terry, did you have something there?
No, no, I was seconding.
Oh, you were seconding Ian's proposal.
I'll propose it again.
All right, and all those in favour? We've got a full house, thank you. Right, a, consider a request from the member of the public to use a metal detector on land in Aundal. Right, a little bit more complicated than the last one, Gerry?
Well, what land is my first question, I suppose.
Yeah, what land in Aundal?
They haven't really said.
We haven't got much, have we?
No, I mean, I would imagine that it's potentially the recreation ground. I don't know, maybe you wouldn't do snipe metal, I don't know. That's about it, I can't really think of anywhere else.
I can't.
Malcolm?
I don't know what people digging up our recreation ground or anything else, you know, you don't know what state they're going to leave it in.
Yeah, okay.
I would say no.
Yeah, Gerry?
Not the graveyard.
Yeah, okay.
And I would also say, you know, I would also politely respond to say, we haven't really got any suitable land and therefore no.
I don't, yeah, I think the question has to be asked, you know, what land directly to him or her? What land are they thinking of and what do they anticipate? Why are they doing it? What do they anticipate finding?
I, I think they're just asking, you know, if there is any land that's suitable, and if there's no suitable land, then.
Yeah. And I've had this request before at other councils and on the whole, people who do it, who will ask permission, you know, if they do dig anything up, they put it all back. So they, they don't leave massive holes and, and things like that. And so it may be that, you know, he was going to do it and did find anything of its significance. Then he might come along and, and show, you know, we might say, well, you know, if you find anything, come and let us know. It might be something that, you know, the museum might be interested in, but I don't know.
Well, I mean, my only experience of it is last time, years and years and years ago, last time someone sort of ferreted around up on the school playing fields, they unearthed a wartime bomb. So there's, and there is, there are numerous ammunition dumps around the school property. I know that for a fact because up at Heron Rogers Wood, they, you unearth 303 rounds all the time.
Thanks, yeah. David, welcome to you.
Hello folks. What are you discussing, by the way?
Yeah, we're, we're on metal detectors.
Metal detecting.
The detectorists.
Well, they look, is it, is it, are they, are they trying to just, there must be loads of good stuff round here. Are we just saying, are we trying to give them permission to say yes?
We've just done the asset register, so you're quite right, there's a lot of good stuff.
Sorry. Well, I, okay, I, I know what it's about, so I'll, I'll listen in and then if I've got anything to say.
Personally, I, I'd rather say no, because there's no, there's nothing with Aundell Town can get out of it that we want at the moment. And there's a risk of setting a precedent that other people can start doing it, you know. Before we'd know it, we're out of control. Unless anybody's got anything to the contrary on that one.
Well, I don't know. I mean, my view is a slightly different one actually. And I'm very, I'm coming as cold, so you'll have to bear with me. There's this Roman road that goes from, which I've just started walking, from Ashton to Wilmington. Have you seen that one? It goes past the rifle range.
Yeah, but David, he's detecting on council property.
Yeah, I agree. There must, there's a lot of Roman, I mean, if I was to go next door and speak to John Hadman, there's, there's lots of reasons why detecting around here could be very informative. The only thing I would say is if we were to allow it, and at the moment it doesn't seem like you are, but if we were to allow it, then we would do it on the provision that some of the findings would have to go to the museum as part of the town. So you're saying we don't get anything back from it, but I think the only reason why we would let them do it on land that's owned by the town effectively through the council is if we get some of that back and, and display it in the museum.
Treasure trove.
Okay, I wasn't, personally, I wasn't particularly worried about whether we got anything back from it or not. You know, it was, you know, if, if we wanted to do a survey of the Landen Aundell, I think we'd do it as a formal process rather than ad hoc.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. So unless anybody's unhappy with that, we go back and say, not at the moment. Okay, thank you.
No, okay, that's fine.
And then increasing the number of stalls on Thursday market, seeing a bit more correspondence about the watchman and.
Yes, just to say that I had an email from the environmental health officer today. We've seen our map of what we were going to have on the market. And I had to give him a call and he basically said that we can't have the watchman. He's not, I mean, he's.
He's not essential.
It's illegal at the moment to have him come and trade. Everybody else is okay. He did query the plant stall. And even when I said that garden centres are now open, but he said it's a very grey area. Because although garden centres have been allowed to open, they haven't changed the guidelines that they've got for outdoor markets. But he said, yes, carry on with your plant store.
Okay.
Anybody asks, just say he's an independent garden centre person. So I've had to tell the watchman, who was, he was fine about it. He seemed to think that maybe in a couple of weeks' time, he will be able to trade, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're down to five now at the moment.
Still good though, still good to see. Well done, by the way.
Yeah, it's manageable.
Fits in, doesn't it, Emma?
Sorry?
That fits in the plan. In fact, it's better if the watchman.
Yes, yeah.
It makes it easier.
And if anybody's got some time again on Thursday to do their little stint, if you're happy to do the same times.
Yeah, I'm, I'm quite, I'm quite happy to do that again.
Okay, lovely, right.
I'll, I'll just double check the timing this time though, 11:30 till 1, yes?
Yes, yeah. Did I see you going down a little bit early?
Yes, I was there.
When I was driving away, I thought, yeah.
It was great. He kept me, he kept me company for a whole hour of, of my stint. It was great. It was very enjoyable, Clive. You're welcome to come early.
Thank you, thank you very much.
There might be a chance of rain, I think, on Thursday.
Oh, maybe not.
It might not be so much fun.
Oh, yeah.
Dark sky.
I'll be there, rain, I'll shine.
Okay, lovely. So, so you'll do the 10, 10 to 11:30, Clive could do 11:30 to 1, and then I'll be back down at 1. It tends by then, by sort of half one, quarter to two, it is winding up anyway, so.
Who else is coming down at 11:30?
Rebecca, Rebecca and Clive.
Does, excuse me, I'm just asking, does Phil Amps always do the roping and coning and?
Yeah, Lisa did help him last week. I got there about seven, but they'd started at about sort of quarter past six.
As I say, the only, the only thing I would say, you know, to fit in this general meeting is to put some cones and rope along the pavement edge.
Yeah.
Because people dip in, go along past trendles and dip through, you know, between the stalls. So, you know, it's not much point in us being at one end or the other if people are just going to dip in off the pavement. But, so it might be worth mentioning that to Phil.
All right, Gerry?
Yeah, we did a little bit of adapting of the arrangement as well, if you saw it.
I saw that.
We, we put a cone.
No entry.
And no entry. And also the, some, a lady was confused, which was fair enough, to be honest. We've got a new entry sign at the entry, basically.
Yeah.
Beside there. I think, I think what we need is, is to not have that there. And then, and the marshals on that end can encourage everyone to queue up anyway.
Just to not tuck in on that side bit, yeah.
Yeah, and there was very little queuing anyway, to be honest. Most of the time, everyone was going through in a fairly regular way. We only got, we only got, I don't know, two, three, four, five people for minutes only, two, five minutes at a time really.
Yeah, we went really quickly.
And I'm just wondering whether, because I think this is going to carry on for quite a while, whether we could get some, we've just made those signs out of A3 laminated paper. Whether we get some more robust signs, you know, out of that sort of corrugated plastic. Maybe get Pumpkin to do some, some bigger signs. But we, we've not done it yet because we thought we were still sort of learning. And so once we feel we've got it right, then I thought we'd invest in better signs.
All right, Gerry?
Yeah, I agree with Emma. And also the A board that was there had the hub opening times, which I, which I covered up and, you know, but anyway, whatever. You know, so it's just little things, little things, I know, but we just need to try and be a bit more, you know.
Yeah, they should be cleaned now.
Yeah, I think we're definitely in this for the long term. Yeah, Clive?
Yeah, and if we do the more substantial signs and you get them on that corrugated plastic, is it worth, I don't know how much it costs to put our Aundell Town Council emblem on, on there as well? As well as arrows and things like that. I mean, I don't know if it costs any more, but it's all, it's all sort of publicity for us and it always keeps the, you know, that it's, it's not just a random arrow, it's actually a direction that we've worked it out. So if that's possible, that would be good as well.
Branding, very important.
Yeah, one other thing, just as we're talking about markets, I know we're normally talking about the Thursday market, but for the farmers market, I did have a conversation with the environmental health officer and also had a town clerk's Zoom meeting this morning and spoke to the clerk from hire. They've got 11 stalls in their market on the 13th of May, 30th, sorry, of May. I mean, I'm a bit worried about it because she thinks they'll have more people coming. But the environmental health officer has seen the map, seen how they've got it set out and he's quite happy. So he said the same, if, if we do decide to have our market, we plan how well the stalls are going to go. And then if we drop a, a copy of the map to him or the plan, he'll have a look at it and, and see if it's.
All right, Gerry, Gerry, just before Clive, yeah.
Yeah, I still think, I'm concerned about what we said last time, which is, there's, you know, if you look down our list of farmers market people, there are, you know, essential food suppliers and there are others that are not. So like, you know, cakes and buns, repleats, flatbread things, chocolates, coffee, you know, there's several that you don't, you wouldn't say are really essential food and I'm.
Depends where you're coming from, Gerry.
Yeah, this is the problem that he, he said, he said they are all entitled, even like, because I said, is our sweet stall all right to come? He said, yes, it's classed as food. And I even, I even discussed feast because you know, we were a bit concerned about that. They're absolutely fine because if takeaway, they're allowed. Also, if they're doing food, that's allowed.
All right, yeah, Clive, just before David.
Is there any, any mileage in repositioning it, saying, putting it in, in the car park at the brewery, for example? Where there's more space?
Well, the licenses for the marketplace, I don't know how easily you're going to.
Right, okay. So we couldn't, we couldn't reposition it somewhere else.
Yeah, I, I think, I don't think it would be that easy to do that.
I was just thinking, because that car park is much bigger and there's more, you know, you can get the spacing. If you had more and more people wanting to join farmers market.
So for the moment, we hold off on that one. Just go through the order now. We've got David, Terry and then Ian.
All right. Obviously with limited numbers, we've got to be fair to the stalls. And as, as we've already ascertained, any stall is available there. I'm just wondering if we run a lottery system. That's what I'm going to say.
Okay, well, when we get to that point, yeah, Terry?
A quick point, Aundell is a market town. I can't conceive of anywhere else that we would want to put the market other than the marketplace. I think taking it somewhere else while it frees up, you know, we've got more space, before you know it, Aundell is not known as a market town. Anyway, that's not, I only picked that up because it was raised earlier. So five stalls we had last week, Emma, is that right?
Four last week, so we're moving up to five this week.
So we're going from five up to possibly 11?
Uh, no, not for weekly, weekly.
For the farmers market?
Potentially, although we've got over a lot more stalls.
Right. I, I think that wants a lot of thought because normally 11 is not a problem because you have them on two sides of the road or two sides of the marketplace. And people, so now people are going in a straight line.
Yeah, okay. So just, just before we discuss then, we've got the point about the size, Ian, and then Gerry?
It, it seems pretty sort of straightforward to me that if we're going to have a farmers market, that's fine and great. And if we can cope with five stalls or six stalls on the normal market, we can do the same on a farmers market. But it also seems straightforward that we don't advertise it too much. But the two things that seem pretty obvious to me is one, we, we've basically put stuff that isn't processed, so it's raw materials, whether it be meat or eggs or whatever happens to be, rather than stuff that's been processed because people can buy that in supermarkets. And also maybe you put a geographical limit of, you know, people within 10 miles or something like that get priority. And if there's only four or three or four of those and we've got six stalls, then we might do a lottery for the other spaces.
Okay, Gerry?
I just wanted to make the point I made before, which is that we don't need to decide this now. You know, we've got another week at least before deciding about the farmers market. And if it's getting worse, then obviously we won't. If it's getting better, then maybe we can.
Yeah.
All right, yeah.
I think what we can do as staff is we can perhaps start measuring out with a two metre distance because this is another thing, well, he, he said potentially three metres between stalls. Work out how big their stalls are and, and see how many we can get in a row to be in safety. Start looking at that sort of thing.
Yeah.
We'll determine who we, who we then say, right, you can come, but you're not.
Yeah, okay then. So as you, as you say, when we get to that, then we'll cross that bridge. Right, so.
Yes, we did miss it. We missed it, Ian.
Just wondering.
Right, we're happy to move on then, or do you want any more on that?
No.
No, I think we missed the previous item, that's all.
That's it.
Building usage.
Oh, yes, yes, we have, yeah.
Right, yeah, sorry, and the cleaning requirements, I've ticked you off because I was ticking the previous one off, yeah.
Yeah, just, well, you touched on it earlier about the buildings having a bit more use. The courthouse hasn't had a cleaner since lockdown and it has been in use all of this time. Gates, it's not so much of a problem. But it's, I think we should consider opening up the toilets back again. So that will mean installing the caretaker cleaner back in there. And then also our cleaner back at Flent House, particularly if we've got the preschool coming in as well.
Okay, everybody happy with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay then. Go for it, Emma. Thank you.
Do you need a follow vote on that, Emma?
Emma, do we need that formally voted on or is it just?
Yeah, well, yes, please. Yeah, so if you just say that you approve cleaning for Flent House.
Okay, I'll propose it then and Terry has seconded it. And then all those in favour?
And I'll add a thumbs up.
Okay. Excellent, thank you. Right, financial matters then. The bank reconciliation, balance sheet and hub trading accounts.
Yeah, this is the final end of year. I think we did look at it at the previous month, but there's been, this is now the final end of year figures.
Yeah.
They have gone off to the internal auditor, but I had an email today to say that some of the files she couldn't open, so Paul's had to resend them. So the return is not going to happen.
So has anybody got anything in there that they're concerned with? Lots of money and lots of numbers, but okay. Well, congratulations, Paul, on that one then.
Yeah.
All right, so we, we need, do we need to take a vote on that one then to approve it?
Yes, please, yeah.
Okay then, well, I'm very happy to propose it and I think David seconded it. And all those in favour?
Oh, was that David Fuller or Chapel?
Fuller. And then payments for April. Anything in there? Has anybody got any issues that's spotted in that? No? Okay then. So we propose that we pay those. I'm quite happy to propose it and Gerry seconded it. All those in favour? We're going to full house again. Prove the annual governance statement.
This is what hasn't, we've not had back yet, so.
Okay, right.
Because we've been given extra time to get it handed back in, it's okay to just wait until the June meeting for us to do that.
Right, okay then. Thanks, Emma.
Have it back by then.
Right. And the accounting statement?
And that's the same. They're all on the same.
Oh, yeah, okay. Prove the list of direct debit standing orders and so on for 2021.
Yeah, this is a standard list of everything that, that we have throughout the year.
Yeah. Has anybody spotted anything unusual in there? No, no, nerve-wracking moment, Emma, it's fine. All right then, so propose that we approve that. I'll propose it then. All right then, so propose that we approve that, I'll propose it then. And then we've got Malcolm as second, all those in favour? Yeah, we're falling out on that one then. Right, quote for the boiler maintenance at Flent House at £872.
Yeah, this is a company that we've been with for a few, well, two, three years actually. I think they've been doing it since we moved in. And they've given us the 10% discount that I'd asked for last year, again, automatically.
Oh, good.
Is it an annual service is what we're paying for?
Yeah.
Right.
Was that, was that the question, the answer you were looking for?
Sorry?
What you were paying for, we're paying for an annual maintenance.
Annual service, no, I just, I would just wonder what you do for £872.
And the breakdown, and a breakdown visit, you know, if it breaks down, they come out.
Right, yeah, yeah, that's right.
Okay, Malcolm?
Has it changed very much since last year?
No, it's, I'd say it's exactly the same.
Okay.
Any other questions? We need a proposal on that one?
We have a question from Lee.
Yes.
I think Lee was waving.
Yeah, okay. Not related to the boiler. My question isn't related to the boiler, but just towards on this section on finance. I was just wondering what your feelings are of how the shutdown is going to affect your carefully calibrated balance sheet.
Right, Jerry, you got a point there?
Well, I don't want to usurp you, Tony, you're the mayor, if you can respond if you want, but I have a view.
Go on, Jerry.
Well, our income isn't dramatically affected by the lockdown because most of it is the, is the precept. Now, obviously, we need to be very careful about people's council tax bills. Basically, that's what it is. So we shouldn't be wasting money and we shouldn't be making sure we're making very best use of that money. But I don't think the council will be in any financial difficulty because our incomes are pretty much protected, I would say. If you agree, Tony.
Right, Emma, do yours first then.
Yeah, just one thing that we may need to look at is obviously within our budgets, we budget how much income we think we're going to get from room hire and that sort of thing. There will be an impact on that. But then I think we'll also, we'll also see that in expenditure because we would have been using the buildings less. So some of it, I think, will potentially balance itself out. It just depends on how, how long this goes on because if, I've already, like today, we've been talking about events that have been camp, that will need to be cancelled. And one that I know Town Clarks are looking at are potentially the Christmas events. Because we still don't, we won't know whether we will be able to have our Christmas market. So there is where we may start to see, you know, some of the income that we thought we might get.
There's the market income, if you're receiving, if you're, you're hosting fewer market stalls, the income from that is reduced.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're not big numbers though, unfortunately.
Yeah, but something like the Christmas market would potentially be something where we may not get as much income coming. But again, we wouldn't be spending out on some of the things we do for the Christmas market.
Just bring Terry in ahead of Malcolm there.
Obviously, there will be an impact. But it shouldn't be big numbers because we don't deal in big numbers. The only thing I was going to say is that instead of waiting three months to do a review of our budgets, I will propose that in two months' time, when we got two months' figures, which will be in June anyway, which will be in three months, we'll have two months' figures and then we can look and probably, and of course, we will learn a little more about this horrible thing that's going around. So we may be able to give a more, a firmer view to the, to the question that was asked.
Yeah, I think it's a very, very good point. Malcolm?
One we're going to ask now.
I'm sorry, I don't want to waste you too long. All right, but yeah, so, you know, if, if, Lee, in, in terms of the answer to you, then, you know, we, we do have a reduction in income from the room hires and as you point out, markets. But in terms of the percentage of our overall income, it's not a big percentage. We can't carry on like this forever, you know, but, you know, and again, you know, as Terry suggested there, we will have to take a, a, an earlier review of it than we would normally have in a calendar year. So just go back around it then, Jerry again?
I was just going to reaffirm what you just said, Tony, that, you know, we don't have a massive income from room hire or QVH or, you know, the other activities we do. It's, it, you know, it actually, to a large extent, we subsidise it. So it's not, it's not something that's going to massively impact on the, on the finances of the council, I don't think.
Right, and Malcolm?
Right, the question I've got to ask is, have our rents in courthouse or elsewhere been affecting very much? Are we collecting the rent that we normally?
We have still been receiving rent from courthouse, but there was a bit of concern at the beginning. But I think the grants that have been coming in from ENC, a lot of people have been able to, to get those.
Right.
And so, and I don't know whether you were at the QVH meeting, we've actually had a £10,000 grant from ENC for Victoria Hall through that, through that scheme.
All right, okay, let's move on then. So the boiler maintenance one, I can't remember where we were now, did we approve that?
Yeah, we need, we were just going to approve it, I think.
Okay, so I'll, I'll recommend it, propose it, we've got Ian has seconded it and the thumbs up from David, all those in favour? I thought Jerry was against it then.
You can come and fix it when it breaks down, Jerry.
Yeah, okay. And then to approve a quote for the CCTV camera in the town centre.
Yeah, I think this was one that you've discussed quite a few times in estates. And it was, and I, I think it's sort of, with all of what happened, I think it was due to come to council in March, but then obviously it didn't. So here we are now.
Yeah.
I'm for it.
So I think it's been debated many times and I'm fearful of starting a debate again. So is it just a straightforward approval from everybody? Yeah, so we've got thumbs up from Jerry, that means Jerry's proposing it.
Has Terry got a question?
Terry's got a question, I think.
Terry's wagging. £6,000 plus a little bit if we have some optional extras, the budget's £4,000.
But we also had money from last year, we had £3,000 in last year's budget that.
We did, are we too?
That we did, yeah, because we didn't spend it. And this is why we want to do it now, because.
Okay, that answers my question, thank you.
All right. So Ian, is that your voting or you?
No, that's the question, how, how quickly can they do it with?
Um, I don't know, it'll be a case of just going back to them and finding out.
I mean, it's very easy to socially distance off a flagpole, isn't it?
Not if there's two of you.
Clive?
One at the bottom, one at the.
Out of curiosity again, are there ongoing running costs to it that we should be?
This company that we, we're going with, we already have a maintenance contract with them anyway.
Right, okay, so it's not going to be.
Because they, they currently maintain this system that we've got.
But it won't add any more to it, having another one changing it?
Well, for a service, I can't see, I mean, the, all of this time that it's taken to get these figures, it seems as if all of the software and everything that they use for this gets cheaper and cheaper as you go on. This has come down since we first started.
How many years have you got then?
Another two years then.
Terry, you want a sensible question now?
Well, just an observation, the, in our pack, we've got a note to say that the annual maintenance agreement can remain as is.
Yeah.
Right.
That's from TBL.
My view on this is, it's been discussed virtually every month since I joined the council, nearly, well, over two years ago. So, yeah, I, I think we're just into rubber stamping the end of a process here, or I hope we are. So Jerry, you wanted another one there?
Well, I was just going to say, if it's coming down every year, don't, don't lump it into the same maintenance contract again. Let's make it cheaper next time.
No, I think, yeah, I think we've come at the point where we do need to get it upgraded.
Yeah, I, I think, I agree.
Okay, and Ian?
I was just going to make the point that essentially we're paying three, seven, five a month, a year rent. But basically, for a system, as I said, it doesn't really do any good.
Yeah, we need to.
So let's upgrade it.
Yeah.
Proposer?
Yeah, okay then.
I've got a proposer.
Yeah, and a second, right, Ian, a second, right.
Just before we, just before we.
Oh, yeah, go on.
What's the figure? Because there are three figures on my screen here. There are two options.
We're having, the option that I've got here in front of me, which I'm looking at is quote 14362. I've only got one option.
Yeah, but there's, there's two options on the quote, the four-channel NVR and hard drive and the wireless routers.
I thought that's, I thought we want all of that.
I think, I think the wireless routers are pretty, because that's the whole point, is we can download the signal.
Yeah, I thought we wanted all of that, yeah.
I think so, and a hard drive the same.
Yeah.
I, I'd assume, I'd assume that, you know, three things added together.
Right, six. Six.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's approximately 6,600 plus the 80.
Still proposing it.
Right, so all those in favour?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, right. Good. Right, to approve a quote for removing a tree?
Can I just ask, is this a tree quite near my house?
Yes, it is.
I better, I better not vote on it then.
So are you, yeah, are you declaring another press?
Yeah, I can't find it, but it's quite, possibly quite near my head. Is it to remove it or just to chop a bit off it?
Well, apparently it's got to be removed, it's, it's not good. So I hope it doesn't get windy in the next month.
I think it's just taking the top bit off.
No, removing it.
Removing it.
Bye, tree.
For nine hundred thousand pounds, I hope it's removing it.
Yeah, he was pretty clear, the whole thing didn't need removing, that's what I was just wondering, but.
All right.
Yeah.
Just on, on an aside thing on, on that, just the, the timber from these things seems to be very good for, for wildlife. Does it have a home in, in the meadow? In Snite Meadow?
Well, the, the actual word, I wouldn't, I don't think we should just put it in Snite Meadow.
No.
Okay, all right.
I don't know whether.
You know, good forestry management, you know, puts these trees back on the ground and allows nature to, to do its own work with them.
Absolutely.
So leaving it, leaving it in that wasteland might be a good idea.
Yeah. I agree with that. I mean, I think the, the days of paying a thou, a thousand pounds to have someone cut it down and then another thousand pounds for selling off the logs, sort of gone. I think we should be interested in the fact of what's happening to it once it is cut down. And if it is usable, usable for nature, then put it back into nature.
Yeah. So Emma, if you just look at those options and.
Yeah, I'll just, I mean, you know, potentially it might be worth, you know, say, like, you know, you could probably leave some of it. But I don't know, I've not seen it from the amount of money it's going to cost to come down. I assume it's a pretty big tree. You know, I don't know whether we want it all left there, whether we take, leave some of the larger bits and just take some of the other rubbishy bits away, I don't know.
Have we got, have we got somebody who represents the conservation groups in Amble that could answer this question?
What about leave what we leave?
Yeah, about whether we.
Yeah, there is somebody that you can speak to, yeah.
Yeah, because I, I know in that field, as you go out of Amble towards Peterborough on the right-hand side, there is a big fallen dead tree in the middle of that field, it's been there for quite a while. You know, and it looks very sensible, you know, it's just been left there to do, nature do its own thing.
Who, who's contracted to take it down?
It's, it's the guy that we use for all of our.
Is that James Rowley? Is that James Rowley? James Rowley?
Yes, yeah. I mean, he's pretty good.
Yeah.
Okay, well, he might have a view on it anyway.
Yeah, yeah.
So let's propose it and the second. Yeah, so Terry as a second.
I'm not quite sure what we're voting on, what were you voting on?
To approve the quote for removing it.
Removing the tree.
So we're leaving it up to Emma to sort out what happens to the tree?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, yeah, that's fine, okay.
Does removing mean, does removing means removing the tree, doesn't it, taking it away?
Yeah, so the quote is to take it away, but if we want it put somewhere else, you know, the, the timber from it or even on the ground, Emma will sort it out.
Okay, we should be able to get it cheaper then, shouldn't we? We've got to leave it there.
I'll see, I'll see what I can do.
Yep.
Right.
Quite happy to leave it to the clerk to do that. Right, all those in favour then? Yeah, that's okay. Sorry, Ian, Ian's not, not participating.
Yeah, he's abstaining, yeah.
Right, planning matters, David.
I love.
Yeah, well, let's hope I don't keep ducking out again, but I did manage to circulate some papers, which I hope people may have had an opportunity to see.
Very brief and lovely, thank you.
And so there are only two applications, fortunately. One of them is to build two additional arms houses in the garden at Parsons Lathams to add to the four that are already there. And it, it does seem to be very much an extension of the existing facilities. The information is more or less set out in there. The one area of sort of potential concern seems to be the observation by highways, which indicates that they may actually be opposed to this because the two extra arms houses added to the four that are there make six. And that would appear to mean that there are six coming off that roadway rather than a maximum of five. But other than that, actually, I couldn't see anything in the application that we would want to object to.
Okay, Jerry?
Yeah, I, I'd read that as well and I wondered whether we could actually, rather than just not objecting, could actually make the comment that maybe highways were being oversell us because it was not a, a normal residential development, it was, it was arms houses. I go up and down that road daily and I've rarely seen cars coming out of that exit, never mind, you know, half a dozen in the morning. So I wondered whether we could actually go a little bit further than just not objecting, actually say that we, we would ask highways to reconsider their objection given that situation.
Yeah, I'd, I'd happily support that because that, that would sort of be in line with my own observation. Indeed, the thing that struck me as particularly unusual was that they were asking for six extra car parking spaces when they're adding two units, which are arms houses of one bedroom. So it actually seems to be increasing the amount of available car parking, but I can't see that it's going to lead to any great addition to the number of movements in and out of the development. And we can, of course, these days positively support an application. It's not just a question of saying we object or we don't object, we can actually support it. So we might support the application and invite highways to reconsider because of the nature of the applications, Jerry says.
Okay.
Yeah.
Was that the only one that sent any real contention over, David?
Well, the other one, which is the one I've had to declare an interesting because it's wrong bait, I mean, is, in a sense, it's something and nothing. It's replacing one style of roof on a workshop that's pretty much out of sight with a different type of roof. Seems to me that although it's technically a listed building consent because it's in the curtilage of an existing listed building, I'd be surprised if the conservation officer objected, but I would have thought that it's the usual kind of response of no objection subject to any contrary view of the conservation officer.
Okay, Jerry?
Again, agreed. I mean, you know, they're trying to replace a crappy PVC corrugated roof with something a bit more appropriate to the area. So why would anyone complain?
Yeah, okay.
Other than that, there were a number of planning outcomes which have been circulated. Nothing really remarkable in there to draw anybody's attention to, other than perhaps the number of retrospective applications that there were in there.
Yeah, it seems to be out of control. Terry?
I was going to ask David just that, so 50% were retrospective. Is that normal? Or is it sort of some form of COVID madness or?
No, I don't think it's entirely normal. And we do have our own policy on retrospective applications and they do crop up from time to time. I think it is somewhat coincidental that we've had a number together affecting listed properties. But it's perhaps one of those things where we should use what opportunities we can to make clear to the owners of listed properties in Houndle that actually it's vital that they apply for consent before they start to do any work, because all sorts of damage might be done if they ignore that. Sadly, there are very few realistic sanctions, I mean, I've always felt that if you want to apply for retrospective planning application to stop enforcement action, it should cost you a lot more money, which might encourage people to do it right in the first place. But there is no provision for doing that.
It is extremely frustrating.
It is frustrating.
Yeah. Right, and lastly, any other comment on those? Thank you, thank you, David, and you did a sterling job there.
Yeah, the only other one that perhaps is just of note was that the application in relation to Tenstoke Hill, which was one actually that we did object to at a recent meeting. And as you can see, has been withdrawn. We objected, we weren't the only person to object. I suspect we'll see a reapplication, but probably taking into account the sort of observations that have been made, which might mean they'll have to rethink and try and put an internal staircase in rather than use the external one they were trying to get away with.
Yeah.
Other than that, nothing else on planning from me?
Yeah, thank you, David, for doing that, it's, yeah, very good.
Right, correspondence for information then, weekly update from En Calc, well, they're doing well in, in putting stuff out for us.
Yeah.
I, I did reply to that survey they did, as I do, just to let you know, it's one of the things I.
Are you playing hide and seek, David?
I don't know. I couldn't see David previously, oh, sorry.
I didn't want.
Peek-a-boo.
That is at that top, isn't it?
Yeah. Yeah, the Covid nineteen briefings.
Yeah.
And then the Northants Togetherness Newsletter and the NCC briefings on the country parks opening up.
Very good news.
Yeah.
So you can get coffee at Ferry Meadows now.
Yeah, so David had asked a question about that, David Chapel had asked a question just on the children's playgrounds. And from what Emma could see, we were still at no authority to open those yet.
No, no, there isn't, no, and I think Danny did hold a Zoom meeting with some other, some of the town and parish councils about play, play equipment, but at the moment, if you've got play out, I mean, there was a bit of, he, he does seem to think that, you know, we should be opening and then it's up to people sort of socially distanced and to, they're not touching too much stuff, but the whole idea of a little children's play area is children want to run around and they want to play on all the equipment. And the guidelines are still saying that they should be shut.
Yeah. I think we're finding it hard enough to control the markets if we had to have volunteers controlling the playgrounds, we'd, we'd no, no hope. Yeah. Okay, any other relevant matters for report only, Emma, start with yourself first?
No, I haven't got anything.
Okay, Ian wanted to get something in there, did you?
Just, just, yeah, three small things, and a lot of you know about James Anderson, the guy who's been making all the face shields. He has now called time on his production at the end of this month, he's just made his three thousandth face shield.
Bloody hell, yeah.
It's amazing, but the government's now introduced a licensing scheme, you have to pay a thousand pounds in order to prove that your face shields are safe to use. So he's decided, time to pull the plug, so he's pulling out all the printers.
Absolutely bonkers.
Yeah, it is, all the printers he's bought and had running and fixed with loving care for the last few weeks, he's going to be donating to local schools, so he's got. The Rotary Club in Houndle are doing a great job pushing the food bank, loads and loads and loads of food, which is brilliant, and they've also made two hundred face masks for age concerned shoppers in Crapson and Rushton, I think, so they're doing a brilliant job. And thirdly, I sent around to everyone, hopefully the stuff that we'll put in the advertiser.
Yes.
Off the end of this week, just mainly saying all the, the stuff we've been doing and are still going to be doing, and a, a brief resume of the field over there from, from the one that didn't get sent out, so it'll be a two page spread, we're gradually growing. But I think they're happy to get a bit more advertising because they'll be concerned that there's less advertising from business this month.
Yeah, okay.
Just, just on that one, sorry, Ian, were you going to put a map of the market into the advertiser?
Send there, yeah.
There's, there's one in there already, but I can change.
I was going to say, is it the one with the watch stall or is it the one?
If Rebecca can send me a new one tomorrow.
She's done a new one, I'll email it to you after.
Yep, yep.
Okay, just, just one on it, I can see Jerry and Terry to come in there, but Ian, is it too late just to get a one liner in there about Lee's Chronicle Edition? The, the online PDF version of it?
I can have that, when, when's it coming out, Lee?
It's, it's going to be available on Saturday morning at Houndle News.
This coming Saturday?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that'll be, that'll be out before the advertiser, but I mean, that it's out if you haven't got one already.
Your PDF, your internet address to the PDF copy.
Yeah, if you just look up Houndle Chronicle, all the stories will be available online and people can look up that Houndle News.
And the Co-op, you reckon, or is that not sure?
Sorry?
And the Co-op as well, maybe, or?
Um, yeah, last time they did stock it at the Co-op, but.
I'll play Houndle News.
All right, just go on Jerry and then Terry?
Um, the first thing was to say I'm still concerned, as I said several times, about the councillors who aren't joining and make sure that they're all right, so, you know, and try and facilitate them joining if they can. And secondly, it was about the cycleways, Emma, have you got a chance to contact East Northants yet about that?
Yes, Neil Holland was chasing it up. I'm just trying to think when he emailed me, I think I had that at the beginning of this week, so I'll go back to him probably towards the end of this week if I haven't heard anything.
So, yeah, it'd be good to know if as soon as you can, it'd be good to know whether, whether they, you know, if they're not working on it, that's understandable, but I'd like to know whether they have been working on it.
Yeah.
And whether we're anywhere near it.
Hopefully he'll get an update to us.
Okay, and Terry?
No, no, sorry, false alarm.
It was tea or coffee, was it? Yeah, okay, then, just carrying on round the table then, David, anything else from you, this is David Chapel?
No, nothing for me.
Your next door neighbour on my screen, is David Fuller?
No, nothing for me, sorry, I can't see David Chapel at all on this screen, so it's just weird.
He's just over there.
Just above your head or mine.
Yeah, it's hiding in your wardrobe.
It's the limit of the iPad, it does nine.
Yeah, okay, so, and Malcolm?
Nothing for me, no.
No, you want a new lightbulb, don't you?
Well, I think it's just, yes, I do.
Yeah.
Mr. Mind the Light Business too.
Yeah, go on, Lee, and then Jerry?
Yeah, I just, I have a question about Snite Meadow, we have another short article and another update about it, seems every issue, there's another update. And our last report was that it cost sixty five thousand pounds and the funding was available from section one O six funding and, and that you were going ahead with the replacement for the boardwalk.
Yes, yeah, we've also had a grant from Grantscape from Auge. And obviously there's been, we, we were expecting that it was going to be done by the end of May, but this, we've got a delay now. But the materials are on order, which the contractor thinks potentially will be ready in a month. And then it's a case of the logistics, he, he doesn't live around here, so he's got to come here and stay somewhere. So it's, it's whether he's going to be able to do that.
Contractor?
Yeah.
What's the name of the contractor?
I've got shed.
I can't, I, I can't remember.
It's okay.
Env.
Emma.
Environment for people, I think.
Emma, if you could give Lee a little written brief on it, yeah, just so, so she gets it right. Yeah, and there was an offer there from Ian for his garden shed.
Yeah.
It's quite big, quite nice.
As long as the chap can do a new roof on it.
Yeah, and put a toilet in around the side of what he's here, they'll be placed near a tree.
Can use the tree in your garden.
Yeah, sorry, Lee, another one?
Just, just also, further to this, you mentioned the cycleway. I mean, it is true that you have a hundred and thirty thousand pounds of section one O six funding available to build the cycleways and you're just working on identifying the pathways.
Well, Jerry, you've got your hand up, you can have a go.
Well, I just wanted to come back on that one because I've been very involved in that, Lee. And so with Transition Houndle, Transition Houndle have done a huge amount of work on the cycleways and we had a plan to, well, not, not, not plan, we had it in progress, we, we met end of last year or mid, middle end of last year with Transition Houndle and Northants Highways to plan the first cycleway, which was to link the upside, the top of Houndle through to the junior school down Cottystock Road. And that work was well underway and we, we paid money for a feasibility study, which was due to be delivered at the end of April. Now, we haven't heard anything from them, Emma's, Emma's chasing the NCC highways for that. Because the intention was that that would then, the, the feasibility study would then go into a detailed, detailed design stage and then it would be actually implemented and built over the summer, so that by the end of the school summer holidays, that, that first cycleway route linking the the, the, the top end of Houndle through, through down Cottystock Road into the junior school would, would be completed. We're still hopeful that could still happen, maybe not quite on the same timescales, but, but hopefully very soon. But there's lots of money being spent on that already, there's, you know, there's, there's plans in place, we've got commitment from Northants County Council Highways to support that plan, so that's all definitely happening, but we're just a bit worried about what the time is going to be now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so a lot going on there, but again, if you wanted to direct contact with, with Jerry, if you're going to write an article.
Yeah, we have, I have him in this article here.
Oh, you have, have you? On his bicycle?
I think somebody contacted you quite a long time ago now, that's a problem with putting the Chronicle together is we start these articles months beforehand and then I just always just have to check to make sure that.
Still true.
Now, obviously, obviously it's all, you know, up in the air at the moment because of what's happened, but I mean, you know, we're, we're, we're very hopeful that's still going to be, going to be happening in the not too distant future.
No, just, okay, no, just one moment, Clive, just let David come in, he was there first.
Yeah, sorry, I, I had completely forgotten, but I received an email from Lisa Ward Holmes, who lives in St Peter's Road. We considered a planning application for the property that was next door to hers and as a council, we objected to that plan. And she's just emailed me to say that the thing is actually coming before ENC tomorrow night. Nothing like getting lots of warning. And her husband was going to go and speak, but she was hopeful that somebody would go from the council to speak to because we had objected. Now, I had no plans to go and in fact I can't go tomorrow, I have annual parish council meeting in Lapham tomorrow remotely, which will be fun. And but it might still be possible for us to give notice and for somebody to go if there is anybody available, but I see Emma's got her hand up.
Yeah, Emma?
Is it a, a public meeting actually at ENC, are they not holding?
Electronic ones.
An electronic one.
I, I don't know anything more than I've said, she said there was a meeting, she said Cameron was going, whether she meant virtually going, I'm not sure, it seemed more likely, I, I doubt that there is an actual physical meeting.
Yeah, I think that they're having.
But I, you know, we have already put in our objections, so to some extent, all we would be doing is repeating ourselves, but I thought that I ought to bring it to councillor's attention because she asked me to.
Yeah, okay, Ian?
I mean, obviously I'm, I live nearby, so I'm probably vested interest, et cetera, but the, the officers have found very strongly in favour of it. So they've obviously ignored our views on it so far.
Yeah, there's a surprise.
Shock. It's, it's one of our, yeah, someone we know well.
Well, you know, very happy to support it, but I'm not, you know, other than I remember the, the planning application coming through, I haven't got enough to do a three minute speech or anything on it.
And I think as David said, I, I think, you know, we've already put a response in and it would just be a question of repeating that response, which I, well, I can't anyway, but I don't think it's going to make that much difference, as they're already, they've got it, seem to have got it in and it's all happening anyway.
Emma?
Just, just a quick one, just on, what's, obviously we object to the applications that come in that we're consulted on. And I know like with the large developments, we do go along and represent, but is, would this be something that we would do for everybody if they contacted us and said?
Frankly, frankly, no. It, it might be that, of course, I used to live opposite them, so that might very well have encouraged her to contact me directly about doing it, but it isn't something we would do as a matter of course, we do tend to do it on what I might call the strategic planning application, but not just for individual ones.
All right, Terry?
I think politically, we've done as much as we should be doing. We've got bigger fish to fry there.
Okay. Just, okay, and Clive?
Just to go back on the cycle route thing, as I said in a previous meeting, I think we should keep our eye on the this government, new government pledge for money being available for cycleways and, and to make cycling a bigger thing than it already is. You know, it's something that we, we should, you know, be active in trying to find out about it. Trying to find if there's any more money available, if we can extend the cycle rates, if we can extend cycling in general around the town.
Yep.
I don't, I don't know if that's possible, Emma, do you, will you, are you likely to get bulletins about that?
Um, I've, I haven't, I think I had one very early on, but I haven't had anything else come in about it.
Okay, so we've got Jerry and then Ian?
Oh, just a quick here, here for Clive, there, there was loads and loads and loads of people outside over the weekend and it's great to see, it's, you know, absolutely everything we can do to encourage that is, is good.
I agree.
Yep.
I agree, but if there's central, if there's central government funding.
Oh, yeah.
We don't, we, it won't be there for very long because they always, they always dangle the carrot and then whip it away really quickly. If we're, if we're primed and ready to jump on it and get how many X thousands of pounds to add to our, our cycle pot, then we should be prepared and primed to do it, that's all.
Definitely.
Yeah, okay, and Ian?
Looking at the same news that Clive was looking at, clearly there's, there was talk of powers as well that, that were being brought out as well as funds to help, you know, close roads, they're doing a lot in London, it would seem, shutting down a road to make them cycle routes and, you know, I thought, oh, close down some of Lapham Road, what a great idea, but even if there were some temporary road things that we could do, I'd imagine the powers will go to highways, but if we had the power to, I don't know, shut down new road to make that little bit safer for children's cycling and family cycling out or just something that would connect the centre of town up, it might.
We just need to find a, a group to support on this, don't they, you know, like the Transition Houndle Group? Yep, sorry, Terry?
So we've got one ongoing one, which is a hundred and thirty something thousand pounds that we have, which we've already spent some money on. which we've already spent some money on. That's a big, for us, that's a big project anyway. Add on all the other cycle wannabe projects. That's huge going over a number of years. Add in the fact that the government might be throwing some money our way. I just wondered if we shouldn't make cycleways something of a, something that we look at every time we have an estates meeting and treat it as a kind of special case.
Absolutely, yeah. Have it as, as a standing item on the agenda.
Yes. The, the only downside of that at the moment is that might be a long time before you have one.
Well, I just wonder why we're not having virtual ones?
Yeah. But I, I think, you know, it's a need at the moment, you know, if we, we find a need, but I, I am, you know, say particularly interested in supporting the groups that have got us this far. You know, Transition Aundal have done a tremendous amount of work on, on the cycleway cause. So Jerry, you, you've got contacts with them.
Absolutely.
If we want to notch this up to the other one and try and get some of this money, you know, that, let's, you know, we, we can support the, the Transition Aundal Group.
Yeah.
All right, Lee, thank you for raising the ball.
Well, just a quick question to follow up, Jerry. I do have down here, it says that the 130,000 pounds of section 106 money has to be spent by September 2020.
Emma, do you want to respond to that?
Yes, it does. Now, I'm still waiting for clarification as to whether, because we've already spent it and we've committed to it, we will be on it and also the fact that we've, we're sort of two months, potentially two months behind. But yeah, at the moment, the official date on the legal agreement is 20, the 2020.
Okay. Right, I think we've been round the, the board, is it?
Sorry, Lee, is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, so we do, we don't know, but we were hoping that we'd be able, you know.
Get a bit of an extension.
We've done enough, we've done enough.
Very exciting and ambitious project.
I mean, it would be grossly unfair for them to suddenly say, you know, oh, we've run out of time. It wouldn't surprise me. But, you know, to run out of time when we've lost two or three months, potentially four months of the year.
Yeah.
We, it would seem to be unpleasant of them to do that, but who, who knows?
Well, why don't we put the ball in their court by writing to them and say, this is the situation?
I think Emma's already done that.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Sorry.
I mean, it's difficult really because if, it's quite often section 106 money, East Northants Council are holding on to it like they are with a couple of the money that we've got aside Flentfield. It's the money for Snite Meadow, although they are releasing that this week, so we'll have it. This money we've got sitting in our bank account, so they've almost, they, we've been giving it and were given it quite a few years ago. So it's slightly different. They've got to physically get it off us.
No chance.
Try and get under the tree.
All right, like, so we've been, as I say, we've been around the board, you know, unless there's anything else. Want to thank everybody and, and thank, thank Lee for staying with us this long.
Yeah. I listen, I listen to all your recordings. That's why you don't see me so much now in Flent House, because I can listen to you in the comfort of my home.
Now you can see us in the comfort of your home as well.
I can get my embroidery done at the same time.
That's what we're doing.
Lovely to see you, Lee.
Yeah.
Thank you for coming.
Okay, to all of you then, thank you very much.
Thank you.